Everyone. Can they hear me okay? All right, we're gonna get started. First, we'd like to just bring up a few things from closed session. We accepted the retirement of Joe Schuster for 31 years of service here in our school district, so we'd like to wish him all the best. And also, we'd like to just send our condolences to the Kevin Davis family for the loss of Kevin. We'll miss him in our school district. All right, moving on, we will go with recognitions.
Okay. Paul Jaisa ahead of time for mispronouncing any names. All right. So, first up, we have the RHS Theater Cast and Crew of Murder at the Banquet. So, the Rolla High School Theater Department has reason to celebrate as the talented cast and crew of Murder at the Banquet took first place at the MSHSAA, MSHA, Theater District One Act Competition. Their stellar performance earned them a spot at the state competition on April the 23rd, where they competed fiercely and showcased their incredible talent. While they did not advance to the finals round, their dedication, hard work, and artistry were undeniable. So, a huge congratulations to Amelia Anderson, Vilien All, Ivy Berger, Hayden Kramer, Chloe Kissinger, Joseph Longley, Audrey Smith, Jersey Stinson, Alexis Weber, Zelda Whitehead, and Jenna Wolford, along with sponsor Kelly McNeven. We proudly celebrate their success and look forward to their future achievements.
You're gonna have to wear hard-toed shoes with me.
Scrunch.
Scratch, yeah, scratch.
Front row.
Parents, you can come down.
Parents? Come on down, parents. Take a picture. Don't be shy.
Thank you. I just want to express how proud I am of these students for all of their hard work and their dedication to the theater department. If you would like to see our district-winning one-act play, we will be performing it on Friday, May 16th, at our annual Night of Theater. So, come out and see us then. And then you can also come out and see most of these kids in our production of Chicago with rescheduled dates of next Friday and Saturday in the new Rolla High School Performing Arts Center. So, we're very excited about that. Thank you.
Okay. Item two. The STUCO Distinguished Student Leader Awards. The Rolla Board of Education is proud to recognize JT Rogers and Gianna Starnes for earning the Distinguished Student Leader Award from the Missouri Association of Student Councils. Come on down. This prestigious honor reflects their exemplary leadership dedication and commitment to serving their peers and community. As the highest leadership award given by the state association, this achievement highlights their ability to inspire others, enact positive change, and uphold the values of student council leadership. We commend JT and Gianna for their outstanding accomplishments and look forward to seeing the continued impact of their leadership. Mr. Bridgman, are you gonna say something?
Yes, I again would like to say thank you to all of you for your support. These kiddos, this is not just an award that they can get for one year. This is their entire high school career. They have to meet a certain number of community service hours. They have to meet, there's a lot of things that they have to do and still be a part of some of the other things you're gonna see tonight that they are involved with as well. So, I'm very proud of these two. They did qualify for that. They worked very hard, starting in their freshman year. And that is the highest award that you can get through the Missouri Association of Student Councils, which is underneath the Principals' Association. So, I'm very proud of these two.
Okay, next is the STUCO Award. So, if you're gonna be a recipient, come on down while I read this.
Carla, you don't have to try to give all those out. I'll just take them back.
The Rolla High School Student Council has achieved an exceptional milestone, earning both the Missouri Association of Student Council's Honor Counsel Gold Award and the National Gold Counsel of Excellence from the National Association of Student Councils. These prestigious recognitions highlight their commitment to leadership service, engagement, and student voice, core tenets of NASC. Out of all student councils in Missouri, only 66 met the rigorous criteria for the state-level honor, and only 17 received the national award, placing Rolla High School among an elite group of student leaders. Adding to their list of achievements, Rolla High School Student Council is also celebrating its 90th anniversary tomorrow, May 2nd, 2025, a remarkable milestone marking nearly a century of dedication to student leadership and service. This legacy of excellence continues to shape a positive school's culture and make a meaningful impact in the community through year-round initiatives. Congratulations to Rolla High's Student Council on this well-deserved recognition and an incredible 90 years of leadership. Roger's probably been around to see most of them.
Shiv's getting funny now. Not feeling loved? He tried stand-up, but that didn't work, so he decided to do school.
I knew that, sitting down.
On the school board.
All right, again, I would feel like I'm at the podium a lot tonight. I'd just like to say how proud I am of these kiddos. They work very hard. They do a lot in our community. And as you know, this has been a rough year, and there's been a lot of ups and downs this year. And these guys didn't hesitate to go to the plate and do whatever needed to happen and help anywhere that they could help and do whatever they could do. A lot of these kids spent a lot of hours doing cleanup and stuff on their own, and they took that initiative on their own. They're amazing, amazing kids. And I know you know that as their parents, but sometimes other people don't see that and don't realize that. I am very proud of them. This is a, this is a part of our group. We have about 85 that is in our council. So, they're very active, and again, they do a lot of different things. And it's, he said it earlier, this is our 90th year, and I went and started tracking back as far as I could go. And I was even into the newspapers, like, it was so thin that you, if you touch them, you felt like they were gonna fall apart. But we went all the way back to 90 years of this organization being here in Rolla High School. That's huge. That's not, that's longer than any state organization or anything else has been around. And from that time back, all I could see was, like, class officers. So, it's an amazing, amazing organization, and I'm proud to be a part of it, and I'm proud to work with these kids hand in hand. Thank you for allowing me to have a little part of them in my life, because it's not only that we changed their lives, they changed our lives, and they're amazing kids. So, thank you very much.
We're gonna move on. Next is Science Olympiad. Rolla Public Schools Board of Education proudly recognizes the dedication and achievements of the RHS Science Olympians throughout their 2025 season. Science Olympiad plays a crucial role in advancing K-12 science education, offering rigorous STEM challenges to 7,600 teams across all 50 states. These competitions allow students to develop problem-solving skills and gain exposure to careers in science and technology. This season, Rolla High School's team secured an impressive third-place overall finish at regionals, placing five first-place awards and advancing to state, or, excuse me, earning five-place, first-place award.
Listen to the medals.
At the state competition, they placed third in anatomy and physiology, fifth in robot tour, and ranked 17th overall out of 32 schools. Meanwhile, the Rolla Middle School team, composed of current and former Quest students from 5th, 6th, and 8th grades, demonstrated excellence at regionals, earning second place overall and advancing to state. At the state finals, they secured sixth place in entomology, third place in Write It, Do It, and ranked 15th overall out of 32 schools. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to their dedicated coaches, Gailah Hale and Ryan Hickerson, sponsors, and parents who have supported these students throughout their journey. Their encouragement and commitment have made a lasting impact. Congratulations to all our Science Olympians for an incredible season.
Parents? You have to be at the microphone. No, it has to go, it goes from TV. All right, we're just, we're just really proud of our students. We have gone to state for several years in a row, but we have never been here to be honored and recognized, so we're really proud that we got ourselves together to get here and show you all the hard work that we've done. We start in September. Sometimes the students have to study at home on their own. It's a big commitment, because they have to become masters of whatever they choose to do out of the 24 different events. We're really proud of them.
Ditto. I'm really proud of these guys, especially how these last couple weeks, we decided to really pull in all-nighters and make bets with their coach to see if we can get on an extra trip. We have competed two years in a row at state, and so I'm really excited about that. Last year, we took fourth. This year, we took third at regionals, and so hopefully, next year, we're gonna ink it up back to second or maybe first. So, we're a very young team, and we're very excited for the future. Thank you.
Item five is the RHS Bulldog Basketball. The Rolla High School Bulldogs had a stellar 2025 season, finishing 23-6 and earning numerous accolades. Ethan Brown, Paxton Ledbetter, John Papadakis, and Jensen Thomas were recognized as All-District by the sports writers' media team, with Brown and Thomas also securing spots on the Class V, District V, All-District team. Brown secured All-State recognition for the second year in a row and set school records for all-time scoring, season assists, and season steals. Coach Mark Miller, named District Coach of the Year, led the team alongside assistant coaches Josh Finyard, Shannon Snitker, and Mike Miller. The Bulldogs battled through the Class V, District V tournament, securing victories in the quarterfinals and semifinals before narrowly falling in the championship game. With a winning season and standout performances, the Bulldogs continue to uphold the strength and determination of Rolla High School athletics. If they're done taking pictures, you're welcome to speak.
I don't even think they've got to take the picture yet.
Huh? They're not done taking pictures?
They haven't even started.
Boy, I haven't started. I can't see anything over these.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Trees.
Trees.
So, I'm Coach Miller. I've been here for 20 years, and this is the first time in my 20 years that I can remember a board reaching out to us and honoring the team like this. So, I want to say thank you very much for doing this. I think it's so important that, you know, that's, that's what my life has been the last 20 years, is trying to motivate and appreciate what we've got with these guys. And this really does a great job of it, and I, and I thank you all for, for doing this. We had a fun season. It was, I think we were 23-6. We had five seniors that we're saying goodbye to, and we've got a couple of them here and just had great leadership from them. We have quite a core of younger guys this year that'll be coming back for next year. So, we're gonna, we're looking forward to some really fun times in the future, too. Thank you all very much.
Parents? You guys can come down and take the pictures. The all of them? The whole staff? Is for Academy?
We're not done reading yet.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Football. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks for all the good times.
These are all the sports? This is girls? With my boy. I'm bringing it. My little one.
Item six is the RHS Lady Bulldogs Basketball. The Rolla High School Lady Bulldogs had a phenomenal 2025 season, finishing with an impressive 24-5 record. Their dedication and teamwork led to outstanding postseason honors with Akayla Coquelin, Mariah Watkins, and Riley Dotson earning All-District recognition. Dotson stood out as the District Player of the Year and secured a coveted spot on the Class VI All-State team. Additionally, Akayla Coquelin broke the school record for most three-pointers in a season, while Mariah Watkins scored, set a new record for most steals in a season. Remarkable accomplishments that highlight their skill and determination. Head coach Charlie Parker and assistant coach Chance Allen were instrumental in leading the team to success, with Parker earning Class VI, District II Coach of the Year honors. The Lady Bulldogs continue to showcase the strength and spirit of Rolla High School athletics. Thank you, ladies.
I'm standing on the bulldog.
I'd like to, I'm gonna take this off of that, all right? I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to be here tonight and recognize these young ladies. They had a fantastic season. We had so much unknown. Coming into this season, we lost a lot to graduation, a lot of young kids on the team, and we came out and had a terrific season, 24-5, district runner-up. We got bumped up to Class VI. Great group of kids, had a, had a fantastic season with them. I look forward to where we're at and the way we're going with our program. Lot of special young ladies that come in and work their, their tails off every night, and I thank you guys for all the support that you had for us all season long. I'm excited about what's to come in our future. We only graduate three girls off of our team from last year, so this is our Lady Bulldogs.
Okay, so for item seven is Fall Sports, All-State Academic Teams. So, a quick summary is that the Rolla Board of Education is pleased to recognize our Fall Sports teams for their exceptional academic achievements. As we are no longer part of the Ozark Conference, which previously provided academic certificates, we have adopted, developed our own Academic Excellence Certificate based on OZ standards. Additionally, MSHA will issue its own academic certificate at a later date. We commend our student athletes for their dedication to both academics and athletics. So, the first team Academic Excellence with a 3.75 GPA or higher is girls tennis with a GPA of 3.90, softball with a GPA of 3.80, and high school volleyball with a GPA of 3.78. Okay. Okay, who's coming next?
Is this volleyball?
Okay, volleyball, again with a GPA of 3.78. So, with an honorable mention of Academic Excellence with a GPA of 3.6 is high school cheer.
I was not prepared to speak tonight, but these, this is an amazing group of young ladies. They have always been super driven and definitely focused on their academics as long as, as well as their athle- athletic, I can't even say it, as long as doing cheer. They've been very well at balancing both of them, and they've had a very great season, so I'm proud of them.
Yeah, so those three teams are also listed as MSHA Outstanding GPA Award, which is 3.5 and higher. Who's next?
Football.
Football team with a MSHA Distinguished GPA Award with a team GPA of 3.16. Guys, you need to take after the ladies.
Jackie, get a picture of Jack smiling. Come on in.
These are the guys that were Academic All-State for the football team. So, to be Academic All-State, you have to be, either have two of three criteria, either have to have a 25 or higher on the ACT, be in the top 10% of your class, or have three, eight GPA or higher. So, these guys are all 3, 9 GPAs or higher and are in the top of their class. So, they're, they're a lot, they're able to do all the stuff we ask and then be at the top of their class, too, so.
Is that all of our team? Okay, so, item eight is has to do with something that's really neat. The Board of Education proudly recognizes the outstanding dedication and perseverance of the RHS Transportation Department, particularly mechanics Jeff Sagal, Sam Brown, Brent Watson, and substitute driver Josh Borden. Despite the challenges posed by devastating tornado that impacted our facilities and buses, these individuals worked tirelessly in difficult conditions without power, heat, or proper lighting to ensure our fleet was ready for the annual Missouri State Highway Patrol inspection. Their commitment to safety and professionalism was evident as they prepared all 65 buses, even overcoming storm damage and inclement weather. Thanks to their hard work, the department achieved a 100% inspection rating, a testament to their exceptional skill and dedication. The Board of Education commends these true team players for their unwavering commitment to our district and the students we serve.
You go first. You go first, then I'll join in.
All right. So, I just want to say briefly, thank you for recognizing this group of gentlemen here. You know, to get a 100% rating on a, on a inspection program is, is kinda rare. Last year, they achieved a 98.6, which is significant in itself. When the tornado hit on a Friday evening, they had just started getting our buses ready for the inspection on the 28th. So, I came in Monday morning and expecting that we were gonna reschedule, and Jeff said, "No, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna be ready." And they put in the hours, they worked in some adverse conditions, were talking, no heat, no lighting, and they, they pushed forward and got all 65 of our buses prepared and ready to go. That included two buses that were damaged in the tornado. Just the effort that these guys put in, I couldn't be more proud of the effort they put in. True commitment.
What team you guys?
So, with an honorable mention of academic excellence with a GPA of 3.6 is high school cheer.
I was not prepared to speak tonight, but this is an amazing group of young ladies. They have always been super-driven and definitely focused on their academics as long as, as well as their athle- athletic, I can't even say it, as long as doing cheer. They've been very well at balancing both of them, and they've had a very great season, so I'm proud of them.
Yeah, so those three teams are also listed as MSHA Outstanding GPA Award, which is 3.5 and higher. Who's next?
Derek.
Football team. With a MSHA Distinguished GPA Award, with a team GPA of 3.16. Guys, you need to take after the ladies.
Jackie, get a picture of Jack smiling. Come on in.
These are the guys that were Academic All-State for the football team. So, to be Academic All-State, you have to be, either have two of three criteria. You either have to have a 25 or higher on the ACT, be in the top 10% of your class, or have a 3, 8 GPA or higher. So, these guys are all 3, 9 GPAs or higher and are in the top of their class. So, they're able to do all the stuff we ask and then be at the top of their class, too, so.
Is that all of our teams? Okay, so, item eight is, has to do with something that's really neat. The Board of Education proudly recognizes the outstanding dedication and perseverance of the RPS Transportation Department, particularly Mechanics Jeff Segal, Sam Brown, Brent Watson, and Substitute Driver Josh Borden.
Come on down, guys.
Come on.
Despite the challenges posed by devastating tornado that impacted our facilities and buses, these individuals worked tirelessly in difficult conditions without power, heat, or proper lighting to ensure our fleet was ready for the annual Missouri State Highway Patrol inspection. Their commitment to safety and professionalism was evident as they prepared all sixty-five buses, even overcoming storm damage and inclement weather. Thanks to their hard work, the department achieved a 100% inspection rating, a testament to their exceptional skill and dedication. The Board of Education commends these true team players for their unwavering commitment to our district and the students we serve.
You go first. You go first, then I'll join in.
All right. So, I just want to say briefly, thank you for recognizing this group of gentlemen here. You know, to get a 100% rating on a inspection program is kind of rare. Last year, they achieved a 98.6, which is significant in itself. When the tornado hit on a Friday evening, they had just started getting our buses ready for the inspection on the 28th. So, I came in Monday morning and expecting that we were going to reschedule. And Jeff said, "No, we're going to do this, and we're going to be ready." And they put in the hours, they worked in some adverse conditions. We're talking no heat, no lighting, and they pushed forward and got all sixty-five of our buses prepared and ready to go. That included two buses that were damaged in the tornado. Just the effort that these guys put in, I couldn't be more proud of the effort they put in. True commitment. I mean, that's the word of the year for the district, is commitment. And that's exactly what they showed, that they embodied that commitment. And I appreciate that.
I'm going to take just a moment just to say ditto to what he said. But knowing firsthand how hard these gentlemen work on a day-to-day basis to make sure that all of our kids get to school and home from school safely is a feat in itself. They go above and beyond, and like, you know, their director Hank said, you know, it's a commitment, but they are committed every day of the year. And for that, we appreciate them, even though I did make them attend this meeting tonight. So, I know, I know, but you deserve this, and thank you for what you do. From the bottom of our hearts, from all of us, thank you. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the rest of the items on our agenda. Next is questions from the floor. At this time, is there any person wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda? Will be granted three minutes to speak, or, excuse me, to make a presentation to the board. Please state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any items on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Please state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. A consent agenda is utilized by the Rolla Board of Education as a means of dealing with routine matters, which must be considered by the Board of Education but require minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information supporting the items listed on the consent agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education member is welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason, normally, all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion. And we have items A through E. Is there anything you'd like to point out?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. Under contracts, you'll see one there for high school softball. Obviously, our softball field is not usable and likely will not be for the next season. So, we have an agreement there with the city to use Schuman Park in the temporary. We discussed several options and looked at different places, but to have a place that we can go for practice every day and have full access to for whatever schedule we need, we appreciate the city's willingness to work with us on that. The other one is, you'll see Thornburg Abatement. That is not related to the storm damage, but we are looking to go into Wyman and finish the abatement of the remaining asbestos in that building. So, that is tile and mastic, and we've been doing that in phases along, but we're going to take advantage of the building being empty to finish that process. So, much reduced cost to do it while there's no furniture and things in the way to be moved. And they're not super-busy at this moment in time, so getting them in before we try to move back in will be a great cost savings and a good benefit for the district in moving things forward, so.
Any other questions, comments?
I just have a question. Will the cost of using the fields at the city be something that insurance is helping us with?
Yes, yes, it is.
It is?
Mm-hmm. They have approved those costs already.
Awesome. Mm-hmm. Thanks. Wonderful. I'll make a motion to approve items A through E on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say no. Thank you. Moving on then to old business, our long-range facility update by Dr. Fulton.
No presentation this evening because there's not been a lot of work. So, I mean, there's been a lot of work, but nothing really changed visually for you to see right now. So, we are waiting on the lighting commissioning, getting ready for our play next week at the auditorium. With that, if you were at senior night, you saw the blue tape up, so that is gone now. But we are still waiting on trim pieces to come in for the FRL. So, there's just a few of the little things that are happening there, and we are still waiting on the final punch list to come in. So, I haven't seen that yet. So, they're still working. That's all for long-range facilities right now. So, going on, moving on.
I know.
I know.
There were lots of positive comments made.
Good.
Scholarship nights.
It was really good.
Everybody was just, those that had not, you know, been there before were just amazed at the transformation.
Absolutely.
It was a gem at one point, so.
Yeah. It was a gem just last year, so. It was, it's quite something. So, what can happen in about fifteen months, so.
It's amazing.
It is, for sure.
All right, and our storm recovery update?
So, with that, no pictures again. There's really, everything that's being done, there's not a lot that can happen. I'm not climbing on the roof of the middle school because that's really what has been big right now. So, Blackjack is up there fixing our roof, not climbing up there right now, so just know that they've been there. There have been supplies delivered for the roof at Wyman as well to start on the biggest part of that. We're going to work on the other part as well in the next few months. But with that, I am meeting with the insurance construction company tomorrow morning to talk about the reconstruction of the inside of the building. So, I'll have a game plan for that coming up before long. Hopefully, we'll be able to start in the middle school within the next week. That's what we're hoping for. So, we will do that. At Wyman, we are having the playground assessed for safety, so I'm bringing in a company to do that, received that approval this afternoon. And at Mark Twain, we are planning some window repairs and planning what that's going to look like because that is on the street side, and I want it to match the newer part of the building. So, we're working on that with our insurance company as well. Working on the cafeteria rebuild, working on that planning and that process with our architects and the insurance company at this time. So, I will tell you, there is, I have a meeting with the architect every week, and there is something moving on every project. So, they are pleased with our progress and just keeping things going. So, we have a great team working on that and appreciate all of their work and their help. Questions?
And our insurance company has been...
Fabulous to work with.
With us as well.
Yeah. Place a phone call if I have a question. They're right there, they answer, they get right back to me if we send emails. So, very, it's been very good to work with.
Wonderful. And do we want to remind the community that those schools will be open?
They will be, they will be open. That's right.
August?
Come August, they will. We're going to, we're making very significant progress there, so very pleased. I think the teachers will not be able to move in at the last day of school, but we will, we are creating a plan to get them moved in before the school year starts and what that will look like. I'll know more about all of that after tomorrow's meeting. So, that's, it is exciting for them to be back in their spaces, be a little refreshed with a little, you know, new paint and, you know, some different floors and things, so it will be good.
Wonderful. Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on now to new business, we have some board meeting dates for the 2025-26 year. Has everybody had an opportunity to take a look at those? Is there any conflicts or anything that we need to discuss? I know, as usual, our June, the last meeting in June is usually a morning meeting. Looks like it's June 30th this year. Any other concerns, questions? If not, can I get a motion to approve our 25-26 board meeting dates?
I move we accept the board dates for 2025 school year as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, moving on to comments, we'll start with Maria. How was prom?
Prom was wonderful. We all had a really good time. The decorations turned out great. The class of 2026, class officers, did an amazing job. And I'm not taking personal credit, I am not on that team. That's one of the teams I am not a part of. So, but my friends, they did a great job. It was beautiful. There was quite a few people there and lots of chaperones, and it was just really fun. Everyone had a really great time. The dresses were beautiful. The guys looked great. I know they don't love to dress up for that kind of thing because the girlfriends make them, but they all looked really great. Everyone had a great time.
Wonderful. Other things going on?
Not really. I mean, so close to the end of the school year, everyone's just hunkered down on testing and getting to the end of the year pretty much. And so, it's kind of full steam ahead, especially at the high school. You know, I'm sure it's like that all over the district. But speaking from high school experience, we're pretty go-go-go at this point to get to the end of the year. But it's been a good one, so. All I can say about that.
And all the graduation festivities that start here in a couple of weeks?
They are excited. Yeah.
That's wonderful, and thank you. Dr. Derek?
Just a few things. One, the timing of having the mechanics and stuff here tonight. But this morning, I had to run a quick errand to one of the buildings and just happened to be out and about, but got to witness a couple of different times cars stopping to allow our buses to turn, allow them to pull out, and witnessed it out on O Highway by RMU, and then again up here at Forum at RTI. And, you know, the RTI one really struck me because it wasn't one lane of traffic, it was all three. It was the turn lane and the drive lane on both sides stopped and allowed seven buses to pull out. And no one honked, no one yelled, everyone's waving. It's just, it's just kind of a reminder, we have really great people and appreciate our community and their respect for our buses and the students on those and the safety pieces that go there. But it was just kind of neat to see. Some positive things from the legislature, at least so far. The budget, Senate approved the budget Tuesday night late, almost midnight, I think, when they finished up. But they did pass full funding for the formula. So, we're not done yet. That still has to go to conference with the House, and then, of course, the governor has to sign off all those processes. So, still a road to go through, but it's a positive step. That additional 300 million in funding equates to about a million and a half dollars for Rolla Public Schools each year, and so that's an important piece for us. Appreciate the support of our local legislators in that process and all that they've done as well. Ms. McDevon mentioned Chicago next Friday and Saturday. Strongly encourage you to come out and take a peek at that. We got to see the first three or four songs before the tornado hit, and so it was very impressive up to that point. I'm anxious to see the rest. So, but I'm sure she would love to fill that place for their first performances there. The Knapp Family track complex dedication Tuesday, the 13th at 5:00. We'd love to see everyone there. Got to visit with Coach Knapp not too long ago. He's just a very fascinating gentleman to speak with. So, I encourage you to come out and hear. I'm sure he will have very sage advice that day. Graduation, May 18th at Gil Bowman over at S&amp;T. Tickets are required, and you can get those from a senior. So, don't, there's no scalping or box office or street sales or anything like that. There may be, but you don't have to get the seniors involved in all that. Last day of school is 22nd. Just as a reminder, dismissal at 1:00. So, again, we'll push some things out social media-wise to remind everybody to be safe and watch for that early dismissal. That throws people off a little bit when the buses are not at their normal time. And then, want to make sure the board has on your calendars for our all-staff recognition breakfast the following morning, the 23rd. We've, reminder, combined our support staff and teacher recognition, so certainly look forward to that. That's always a good time. And then, summer school is 2nd through the 27th. So, we're still rolling and keep rolling. Lots going on, as Maria mentioned. I think there's about four or five events every night from here on out. So, there's no shortage of things to see and do, but we appreciate everybody and their efforts and looking forward to wrapping up the year here, so.
Also, band concert Friday.
Band concert Monday, yeah. Yeah, thank you, Sue. Yeah, I certainly did not get everything on the list, I promise.
Wonderful. All right. Next item up is written reports. Just pay attention to our substitute teacher list, finance report, cafeteria reports, and our monthly financial report is in there as well. If we have nothing else, are we ready to go back into closed session? Can I get a motion?
I move we go into closed session.
I second that.
All right, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Yes.